I'd like to call this meeting the Westland City Council of Order. Begin with the pledge of allegiance led by Councilwoman Emily Baumann.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Councilwoman Baumann.
Present.
Councilman Godbaugh.
Present.
Councilman Hersberg.
Here.
Councilman McDermott.
Here.
Pro Tem Rukowski.
Present.
Councilwoman Sampe.
Present.
President Hart.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Mr. Clerk, begin the procedure for nominations and appointment of council leadership.
Yes, I am going to read this. It'll only take a moment. The procedure for filling a vacancy which has arrived in both the city council president and pro tem positions by virtue of the fact that it's the beginning of an even year. I'd like to read just very briefly what will be doing. Nominations to a vacated elected position shall occur by the self nomination of the council applicant or nomination by a council member. These nominations do not require a second. All names nominated, if there are more than one, shall be printed on a piece of rectangle paper of the same size, at or near three inches by five inches. Nominations shall not be folded. All names shall be placed into a covered box or receptacle and a motion to close nominations must be made in support. The paper slips shall be withdrawn from the box, one piece at a time, by the city clerk and the nominees will be voted in the order in which they are removed from the box. If there are any questions, I'll answer them now. Seeing no questions, we'll move right into nominations for council president.
Mr. Clerk, I'd like to nominate Councilman Michael McDermott.
Motion to close nominations.
There's a motion to close nominations. Is there support?
Support.
Supported. All in favor, excuse me, any discussion?
Who's it was?
Councilman Sampe.
Sampe.
Any discussion? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carried unanimously. Mr. Clerk.
We'll now accept a motion to elect the council president. There has been one person nominated, Councilman Mike McDermott.
So.
Support.
And at this point, I'll ask if there's any discussion regarding the nominate, rather, the motion to approve the council president. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Is there any dissent? Hearing and seeing no dissent, the unanimous vote shall be cast. Councilman Mike McDermott is council president.
Councilman McDermott.
Just give it a mo, give us a moment to organize.
He has as many things as he has words.
That's right. We are not going to recess.
Go ahead, sign your stuff down.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
You're taking all of the pomp and circumstance.
Couldn't fill the U-Haul in one. Couldn't fill the U-Haul in one.
Stand back up.
Stand back up.
Stand up.
Council president?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Thank you all, thank you.
Now, I just know council president is going to go right into nominations for council pro tem.
I would like to go right into nominations for council president pro tem.
Great. If there are nominations, please offer them up.
I nominate Melissa Sampe.
I nominate Emily Baumann.
Motion to close nominations.
A moment. Seconded by.
Myself.
Thank you.
There is a motion to close nominations for council president pro tem and there is support for that motion.
Is there any discussion?
Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Is there any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing none?
All right, so at this point, since we have two nominees, we will bring out the trusty box that I just fashioned an hour ago and two slips of paper.
You really need to get to an official box.
I know. I have one card that I printed Emily Baumann on. I'll deposit it in the box. I have another card, says Melissa Sampe. Deposit that in the box. Here, you want to help shake?
Yes, sir.
Shake it. Last time I did that, they flew all over. All right, I'm going to, without looking, I'm going to draw two names out in order. First name drawn is Melissa Sampe. Second name is Emily Baumann. We will vote them in that order. Give me just a moment, please. For, for the vote to approve Melissa Sampe as council president pro tem, an affirmative vote would be cast if you wish to vote yes, nay, or no. Councilwoman Baumann.
No.
Councilman Godbaugh.
No.
Councilman Hersberg.
No.
President McDermott.
Yes.
At this time, pro tem Rukowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sampe.
Yes.
Councilman Hart.
Yes.
Having had four votes, Councilwoman Melissa Sampe is elected as president pro tem and we shall not proceed to the next nomination.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We will not move on to special announcements and presentations at the meeting. Mayor Coleman with a special announcement and presentation.
Good evening. So this may be probably one of the most special things, probably the most special thing I've done as mayor so far. We're going to honor someone who's worked for every mayor this, this city has ever had. And if you don't know Mr. Ken Sharp, I'm going to tell you a little bit about him. Mr. Sharp, could you please come up? So this is a City of Westland resolution honoring Mr. Kenneth B. Sharp. And I'm going to read the whole thing because this is a very special moment here in our city and you'll see why. Whereas Mr. Kenneth B. Sharp was born March 7th, 1938, Ken and his wife Carol lived in Nankin Township, which in 1966 became the city of Westland. And whereas Ken and Carol have been married for nearly 60 years and have four children. And whereas Ken became a fireman for the city of Westland in April, 1967, and worked his way up through the ranks and retired as battalion chief within 25, with 25 years of service in April, 1992. And whereas Ken has been a pillar in the community for many decades and has served as a member of the Westland Lions Club, the Norway Community Citizens Council has helped the Westland Goodfellows and many more organizations. Whereas Ken has received several awards for his dedication to the community, including the Melvin Jones Award, the Chamber of Commerce First Citizen of the Year, and was inducted into the Norway Hall of Fame. And whereas Ken has worked for every mayor, city council, and planning director since the city was first established in 1966. And whereas Ken completed his more than 27 years of service on the Westland Planning Commission on December 5th, 2023. Resolved that I, Kevin Coleman, mayor of the city of Westland, do hereby honor Mr. Kenneth B. Sharp for his commitment and dedication to the, dedication to serving the city of Westland for more than 50 years. Congratulations, Ken Sharp. One, one moment, and I just want to say one last thing. You know, walking into the, the building tonight, I ran into Ken in the hallway and I, I said, Carol, if you could come up too. I, I said, this is Carol Sharp, Ken's wife, who's done a great job for our community as well. And I, I said to Ken and Carol, you know, you deserve a lot more because of everything you've done for the city, but this is what we have just to, just as a token of our appreciation as a community. And I just want to say from the bottom of my heart, thank you so much. And if you could say something?
Well, you know, it's been a privilege to be this part of this city for all these years, like the mayor says, to work for everybody that's, that's been here and as mayors and councils and people on the planning commission. It's been an honor for me to be able to do that. I appreciate the time, but it's time for me to, time for me to relax. Time for me to go. But I'm not leaving the city. I'll still be involved. I'm just retiring from the planning commission. But thank you. Thank you, everyone.
We will now have a special announcement and presentation from State Representative Dylan Wegela.
I can have some cooperation from my phone here. Um, I don't have the, all the phone numbers memorized yet, so I want to have it ready. But first off, I just want to say congrats to council president McDermott, dear friend of mine. So I'm just so proud of you and I think the council knows a unanimous vote, just, I, I can't, I'm so excited about that. And everybody else who is inaugurated tonight, I just look forward to working with you, continuing to work with you, et cetera. So for those of you who don't know me, my name's Dylan. I represent southeast Westland, so that's southeast of Cherry Hill and Wayne Road. I live in Garden City. I have four cities that I represent, Garden City, Inkster, Romulus, and Westland. I wanted to come by tonight for a couple of, of things. One, we, we obviously signed E-Died. We're getting ready to come back starting next week. We're going to have you at a 54-54 split until the special election on the 30th, where the pri, is the primary, and then there'll be a, a general as well. So we'll be at a split in the House for a while. Hopefully we can get some good bipartisan work done. I want to also say, you know, to everyone on council and everyone in the audience, if you have someone in the community that needs to be recognized, please reach out to my office. We, we do tributes all the time. We just did some for our Westland firefighters recently. Also, because the 25th district is vacant, we, and I, and I ask all of you, if you have some, anyone in Westland, if someone is struggling with state level programs, unemployment, or Medicaid, please reach out to my office. We are assisting everyone we can during this time until that seat is filled. So if you'd like to reach out to us, our email is DylanWegela@house.mi.gov. D Y L A N W E G E L A at house.m i.gov. And our phone number is 517-373-3818. And I'm just so honored to represent Westland and anything, anybody needs, please reach out to us. We're here, we're working. And I'll also add, one of the challenges of being a state rep for four cities is coffee hours because I want to make sure they come to each city. So we've developed a plan to have some consistency with that from my office going into this next year. We are going to have monthly coffee hours in the city of Garden City at the Radcliffe Center every month, and then we are going to rotate to the other cities as well. So some months I'm going to have two. But I just wanted to have a reoccurring time, which we'll announce later on social media if you, if you follow me in the next coming weeks. But then also to come to each city because I know from experience that when you go to an individual city, you have much better attendance. But I want things to be consistent and pre-planned. I know our, you know, Mayor Coleman, when he was state rep, always had his at a certain time, and I think that helps with attendance. But we, we usually text ahead anyway, but we're going to start doing kind of double duty to make sure that everyone is represented. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Representative. We will now move on to questions or input on the agenda from the public. This section will allow members of the public at the beginning of the meeting to address items that are specifically on tonight's council agenda. Questions may be asked and responded to during the agenda item following a motion in support from city council. Agenda items only, is there anyone on my left? Agenda items only, is there anyone on my right on the consent calendar agenda? Yes, sir, Mr. Rock. No, okay. I'll ask one more time, is there any public comment on the consent calendar agenda? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion to close consent calendar? Is there any discussion? Yes, council.
No.
Point of order, you have a motion to support on the, sorry.
I'm sorry. The motion to support on closing the agenda.
No, no.
Okay, sorry. I apologize, we're.
Point of information?
Yes.
Did we close public comments to the entire agenda or just the consent calendar?
We're on the consent calendar agenda.
Okay, so.
Yep, I'm sorry, I apologize about that, yep.
Okay, so, so the whole agenda was, the public comments was on the entire agenda?
On the, yes, on the consent count, on the agenda.
Entire agenda, okay. I just, I wanted, I was concerned that some people thought it was just for the consent calendar.
No, sorry, that is, it's the entire agenda, my apologies.
So I think you have somebody.
Did you have a comment on?
No.
The agenda? It's on the entire agenda. Yes. My apologies, Mr. Rock.
Thank you for clarifying that. Under new business one, confirmation of reapportment of James Fasson to the position of legal director for two years. I know in the past it was around $825,000 a year. I'd just like to know what the amount, if it's going to be the same or it has a change per year for the, our city attorney.
Yep, and then there's a question on the floor. Is that something that the administration can answer?
Yes. Thank you. Council president, through the chair to our purchasing director, do you have that number on you? I know the, the number was 950 for the current year, but through the chair, the, for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2024, the, the amount budget to the law department is $950,000. We have not modified the budget for years beyond June 30, 24 at this time.
It's a lot of money. I'm hoping maybe with our new mayor, we won't have as many lawsuits in the future and maybe that can go down. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the council chambers that wishes to speak on the agenda?
Yeah, he's talking about lawsuits, you guys got going on?
It's not an agenda.
It's not an agenda? He was talking about lawsuits.
He's talking about item one, which is on the agenda regarding the city attorney's office.
Okay, how many, how, how, the city attorney's office has lawsuits pending?
The city attorney's office, sir, the question is for the reapportment of the city attorney this evening. That was what he was discussing.
Oh, okay, I thought you had lawsuits to discuss.
So anyone else in the audience?
I see something on here on the agenda that just caught my eye about the cold red. I think it's a great system and I think it works great. It does even call all the way out to Redford to let people know what's going on here in Westland. Let's say something happened in Garden City. I got alerted about it, or I even got to learn about the weather. And I think it really comes handy for people that texting or when they, when they call your phone. So I think it's really, it's really a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you. One last call, consent calendar and business agenda, is there any other further public comment? Hearing none, is there a motion to close and approve the, sorry?
Just move to the consent calendar.
Okay, now we'd like to move to the consent calendar items.
So.
Moved by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Sorry, folks. Is there any discussion? Are there any changes to the consent calendar item?
Yes.
Agenda, yes, Councilwoman.
I would like to, what number is it? Sorry about that. Why am I? Why am I blinking? Sorry. Oh, I would like to move item C into new business for discussion.
There's a motion to move item C to new business item 1A for discussion and there is support. Supported, motion by Councilman Baumann, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing none, item moves. Is there any other discussion on the consent calendar agenda? Any other discussion?
Changes.
Any changes? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing none, motion carries.
Let's back up for a second, just to keep it clear. We are now at the consent calendar minus item C.
Yes, correct.
And you're going to ask for?
A.
Yeses or?
Roll call.
It does not need to be a roll call.
Okay. Is there a motion to close the consent calendar?
We did that.
Yeah, we had that.
Yes, so what do we ask?
Any other changes to the?
Any other changes to consent calendar agenda? Any other changes?
Hearing none, any dissent?
Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing none, motion carries.
All right. Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Approval of minutes of the regular meeting held December 18, 2023. Traffic control order 2024-01, install multiple no parking, stopping, standing signs on the west side of Wildwood, north of Edison Elementary bus cutout, all the way to Stacy. Approval of alerting subscribe, service subscription renewal with code RED. Term of this subscription shall be for a one-year period in an amount not to exceed Approval of the city's mobile application subscription renewal with Westland Click &amp; Fix. This term shall begin immediately and will end on June 29, 2024, in the amount of $16,989.63. Approval of website monitoring subscription with Monsito Incorporated to provide SEO accessibility, compliance, content, privacy, and speed monitoring services. This term shall be for one year in the amount of $5,972.4. Approval to update the licensing for all in-car modems used by the police department. Administration recommended using CDWG for this purchase, excuse me, in the amount of Approval of MDOC contract number 235482 for hot mix, asphalt cold milling and resurfacing, and concrete pavement repair along Ann Arbor Trail from Sanford to Merriman, including earthwork, aggregate base, concrete curb ramps, curb and gutter, permanent signing, pavement markings, and together with all necessary related work. The total project cost is $1,342,575, of which $1,094,232 is a federal grant. The city's share is $248,343. The city's share is $248,343. Adoption of manpower amendment for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2024, related to the acceptance of the fiscal year 2022 staffing for adequate fire and emergency response grant. This item had been introduced December 18, 2023. Adoption of 2024 annual performance resolution between the city of Westland and MDOT to construct, operate, and/or use the state highway right-of-way area on roads that are under the state's jurisdiction within the city of Westland. This authorizes the public services director, neighborhood services director, superintendent of water, the mayor, and/or city clerk to apply to MDOT for the necessary permit to work within the state highway right-of-way on behalf of the city. The last item approved on the consent calendar today. Adoption of a prepared resolution approving Wayne County Annual Permit Number A24158, which authorizes the city to apply to the county engineering division permit office for permits to construct emergency repairs, annual maintenance work, and for other purposes on local and county roads located entirely within the boundaries of Westland, as needed from time to time to maintain the roads in a condition reasonably safe and convenient for public travel. This authorizes the public services director, neighborhood services director, superintendent of water, the mayor, and/or city clerk to apply to the county, the permit office, for the necessary permits to work within the county right-of-way of local roads on behalf of the city. Wow. Moving to payment of voucher.
Zero motion. Motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Is there any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing none. Motion carries.
New business. Item one. Confirmation of reapportment of James Fasson of Fasson &amp; Grisco PLC to the position of legal director for a two-year term with the term effective January 1, 2024 through December 31, 2025.
There's a motion on the floor by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilwoman Rukowski. Mayor, did you have any discussion? Okay. Is there any discussion from the council? Any discussion from the council? Is there any dissent? Is there any dissent? Hearing none. Motion carries.
We will now move to item 1A, previously known as item C under consent. Approval of bid for official city newspaper. Administration recommends Don Nicholson Enterprises LLC doing business as The Marketplace News with a term to commence immediately and expiring December 31, 2024. Amount budgeted $18,000.
So moved.
Move. Motion by Councilman Hart.
Support.
Supported by Councilwoman Bowman. Is there any discussion?
Yes. I just, I had received a question about this, and I just, I, I'm going, I'm supporting this. I am supporting, I'm going to vote in favor of it. But I just want to make, let people know that, and I'm going to let other members say, correct me or anything like that if I'm not saying this right. We are required to put our notices in a printed newspaper, and I know there's been some concern and question about changing that so that we can actually get it into a more of a modern media online. So just so people know, this was the only bid we received, and I'm very thankful that we have it and that we're able to actually provide this, you know, actually fulfill our duties as putting out notices, these legal notices on paper for people. So I don't know if you've, if, I'm going to just encourage people. If you've not seen this newspaper, it is available in, right here in City Hall, right here, and I've seen it in Leo's and some number of other places. So if you're looking for legal notices, I'd encourage you to pick up this paper because that is the legal paper. And for what it's worth, we, I understand we did put a request out to other places. This was in the, this was in the, our packet. So we put a bid out to other places for bids, but this was the only one we received. And I just want to make sure people understand that, that we are doing our, our proper thing to actually have this with this paper. And I, I'm kind of mumbling, so I'm going to kind of kick it over that, through the chair, if, I think, I'm not sure who is responsible for these. Devon?
Be Devon. We're doing purchasing director, Director Adams.
Okay, Director Adams wants, has anything to say just to help support that as well, or if there's anyone else that wants to say, just so, just so that people are educated on how this works and why.
The, Mayor, yep. So, Mayor, do you have a comment on that?
Well, thank you, Council President. Thank you, Councilwoman Bowman. You know, this is something that's required in state law. The Public Notice Act is in many pieces of law. It's over 100 different pieces of state statute. As a state representative, I actually introduced a bill in all three terms that I served. So three separate times, I attempted to modernize this policy at the state. Unfortunately, due to very heavy lobbying, it was defeated each, each term. But I will encourage our representatives and our senators to continue the fight and try to change this. But we, you know, we, we're going to do the best job we can with what we have. And it's, my understanding is this is less money than, that has been spent historically. We're just putting the ones that we're absolutely required to put in there. But it is the, a local business. It's a, it's a paper you can find around town at different businesses. Usually it's, it's a free paper. We have it at the front desk at City Hall. We're still required to post these legal notices in print, but we'll see if maybe we can change that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there any other discussion on this item? Any discussion? Councilwoman Sampe.
Thank you. Council President. Through the chair to Devon. I spoke with him earlier today, so thank you for that conversation. But Devon, I don't know if you would like to address the difference in pricing too, as we talked about, there's actually a significant cost savings for the paper in comparison to other papers previously that we had put out to bid. So perhaps you want to address maybe the cost, just for those that may have some question about the cost of the notices.
Sure, I can answer that through the chair. What's being presented tonight is a contract with miscellaneous flat rates. Previously, the contracts were, were approved by council on a per column inch basis, which, depending on the size of the ad, could ultimately be higher than the flat rate. So with these flat rates and the budget of $18,000, historically, we typically spend about $13,000 on this contract annually, and, you know, given things moving online, we expect to stay on track for that number, if not coming a little bit less. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Director.
Is there any additional discussion on the item? Any additional discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing none. Motion passes unanimously.
New business. Item two. Confirmation of reapportment of Mohamed Ayoub as planning director with the appointment effective January 1, 2024 through December 31, 2025.
Moved by Councilman Godbout, supported by Councilwoman Rukowski. Mayor, did you have any discussion to add?
No, other than that I would appreciate the council's support and look forward to working with Mr. Ayoub.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Is there any discussion from the maker? Any discussion from the supporter? Councilwoman.
I, I support the recon, the, excuse me, the reapportment of Director Ayoub. I feel that under his leadership as our planning director, there has been a definite increase in the amount of individuals wanting to develop and come to Westland and, and bring their business here. So you're a very talented man and, and highly qualified, and I think we're very lucky to have you in our planning department. Thank you.
Is there any additional discussion? Councilwoman Sampe.
Yes, I, I also wanted to express my support for Mo, who is extremely accessible and really has been a pleasure to work with. Your knowledge and your talent is, is definitely wanted here, and I hope that we can reconfirm you as our planning director because I don't ever want to see you go. You do such a fabulous job, so thank you.
Is there any additional discussion? I will add discussion. Mo, I want to thank you for the job you do. As Councilwoman Sampe and Councilwoman Rukowski both said, you're always accessible not only to us but to the residents as well. Any questions, comments, concerns we have? You've got a great tool belt and great, a lot of knowledge there to answer anything that we need, so we're hopefully looking forward to your reapportment and the work you do for the city. So thank you, Mo. Is there any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing none. Motion passes unanimously.
Item three. Confirmation of reapportment of Kyle Mulligan as Parks and Recreation Director. The appointment is effective January 1, 2024 through December 31, 2025.
Moved by Councilwoman Bowman, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Mayor, did you have anything to add?
Again, I would appreciate your support on this item. Kyle is a hard worker and I look forward to working with him. Thank you.
Okay. Any discussion from the maker? Any discussion from the supporter? Is there any additional discussion? Councilwoman Sampe.
I, I can't leave out Kyle since I spoke about Mo, so thank you, Kyle, for all of your hard work and your accessibility as well, too. I know that we have a very large footprint that we want to use for our recreational programming, and you have a big charge ahead of you, so I look forward to working with you. Actually, we're going to be speaking tomorrow, so again, I think, I thank you for your accessibility and also for just your innovative ideas as well.
Is there any additional discussion? Any additional discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing none. Motion carries unanimously.
Item four. Confirmation of reapportment of Plant Moran and Associates as city auditor to provide auditing and financial consulting services to the city, effective immediately and ending December 31, 2025.
Moved by Councilman Hart, supported by Council President Pro Tem Sampe. Mayor, did you have anything to add?
No, thank you.
Okay. Is there any discussion from the maker? Any discussion from the supporter? Okay. Is there any additional discussion? Councilwoman Bowman.
I just want to add that as being a new council member, I had an opportunity to meet with Plant Moran and, Plant Moran and Associates, actually not Plant and Moran, Plant Moran Associates, and they are just really, they're amazing to work with. I've actually, you know, just, they answer so many questions and they're available, so I just really appreciate the opportunity to work with them, and of course, I'm going to be in support of this. But I just wanted to say that they have been great to work with, especially as a new council member, to make sure that I understand some of the things that they do, so thank you.
Thank you. Is there any additional discussion? Any additional discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing none. Motion carries unanimously.
New business. Item five. Confirmation of reapportment of Chris Galatas to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Council for a two-year term with the term to expire December 31, 2025.
Motion by Council President Pro Tem Sampe, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Mayor? Okay. Is there any comment from the maker? Any from the supporter? Is there any additional discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing none. Motion carries. Is the individual here to stand and be recognized? Does not look like he's in the audience.
New business. Item six. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Director Mulligan, did you have discussion? I apologize.
New business. Item six. Confirmation of reapportment of LaShawn Hart to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Council for a two-year term with the term to expire December 31, 2025.
Okay, there is a motion by Councilwoman Rukowski, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Mayor, did you have anything to add on this? Okay. Kyle, did you?
Through the chair, just for all of these appointments, I believe only items nine and 10 are present tonight. I didn't see unless Julie or LaShawn walked in the door, but just to clear that up.
Okay, thank you. Is there any additional discussion? Councilman Hart.
Just for clarification's sake, there is no relation, so. That is all. That's unfortunate for you.
Is there any additional discussion on the motion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing none. Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations.
New business. Item seven. Confirmation of reapportment of Judy Slaybaugh to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Council for a two-year term with the term to expire December 31, 2025.
Motion by Councilwoman Rukowski, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Mayor?
You know what? I was going to thank everybody at the end, but I'll just do it now. We really appreciate you serving on all these boards and commissions. As I honored Mr. Ken Sharp earlier, 27 years, some of you have served, are brand new or fairly new or have just served a couple of years. I just want to say ahead of time, I'm going to talk a little bit at the end of the meeting, but we appreciate you. So thank you for serving. Thank you for everything you do for the community. Congratulations on being reappointed.
Thank you. Any discussion from the maker? Anything from the supporter? Any additional discussion? Any additional discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing none. Motion carries unanimously.
New business. Item eight. Confirmation of reapportment of Jessica West to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Council for a two-year term with the term to expire December 31, 2025.
There is a motion by Councilwoman Rukowski, supported by Council President Pro Tem Sampe. Uh, Mayor? Okay, all right, just got to, just got to ask. Set it off. Perfect. Is there any discussion from the maker?
No, thank you.
Any discussion from the supporter? Is there any additional discussion? Any additional discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing none. Motion carries unanimously.
New business. Item nine. Confirmation of appointment to Derek Davis to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Council for a two-year term with the term to expire December 31, 2025.
Okay. Moved by Councilwoman Bowman, supported by Council President Pro Tem Sampe. Is there any discussion from the maker?
No.
Any discussion from the supporter?
Yes. I am, I'm very excited that Mr. Davis has stepped up into this role because he really has, has done a great job just with being an advocate in the community, and it's great to see you on a board. So thank you for stepping up into this role, and I know that they'll embrace you with arms.
Is there any additional discussion from the council? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing none. Motion carries. Derek, stand up and be recognized.
Item 10. Confirmation of appointment of Amber Gilbert to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Council for a two-year term with the term to expire December 31, 2025.
There is a motion on the floor. It is by Councilwoman Rukowski, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion from the maker? Any discussion from the supporter? Okay. Is there any additional discussion from the council? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing none. Motion carries unanimously. And Amber standing to be recognized.
Item 11. Nomination of regular member of the public to the Nankin Transit Commission to serve a two-year term with the term to expire December 31, 2025. Michael Harris is the current longstanding public member.
Would like to nominate Mike Harris.
Okay, there's a nomination for Michael Harris.
Motion to close nominations.
There's a motion to close nominations by Councilman Hersberg, supported by Council, Councilwoman Rukowski. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Councilwoman.
Thank you, Council President. I've had the pleasure of serving with Mr. Harris on the Nankin Transit Board for four years. He brings a depth and wealth of knowledge to the position. He is a member of the Paralyzed Veterans of America. He's a strong advocate for those with disabilities, and his work on the board is so very needed and necessary, and just a fantastic addition to the Nankin Board. and necessary, and just a fantastic addition to the Nankin Board, so I am fully in support of him remaining in service to the commission. Thank you.
Is there any additional discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing none, motion carries.
New business, item 12. Appointment of Regular Member of the Public to the Nankin Transit Commission to serve a two-year term with the term to expire December 31, 2025. Michael Harris has been nominated for about the 10th time.
There's a motion by Councilman Godbout, supported by Councilwoman Rakowsky. Is there any discussion from the maker? Any discussion again from the supporter? Any additional discussion from the council? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Harris.
New business, item 13. Nomination of Councilmember of the Public to the Nankin Transit Commission to serve a two-year term with the term to expire December 31, 2025. Councilwoman Andrea Rakowsky is the current City Representative.
Council President, I'd like to nominate Councilwoman Emily Bowman.
There's a motion to close nominations by Councilman Hersberg. Supported by Councilman Hart. Is there any discussion from the maker?
Thank you, Council President. It's been an honor to serve the citizens of Westland on the Nankin Transit Commission for the last four years, but I do believe in change of position. I think Emily will bring a fresh, new perspective. This multi-governmental body serves our senior citizens and our utterly abled or disabled members of our communities, Wayne's Community, Garden City, Inkster, and Canton. It's a worthy organization and commission that does so much for us, and I think Emily will serve the citizens of Westland well in that commission.
Is there any additional discussion from the supporter? Any additional discussion from the council?
Yes, I had discussion.
Yes, Councilman Hart.
It was quite short. I just agree with what Councilwoman Rakowsky said. It's good to go ahead and get some new perspective over there, but also, it runs like, honestly, runs like a Swiss watch, so, being able to be part of that, see how it works, it'll be good for you, and I think you'll be good for it, so I'll be supporting it. Thank you.
Is there any additional discussion? Any additional discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing none, motion carries. Councilwoman Bowman, congratulations.
Since she did not dissent, new business, item 14. Appointment of Councilmember to the Nankin Transit Commission to serve a two-year term with the term to expire December 31, 2025. Councilwoman Emily Bowman has been nominated.
There is a motion by Councilman Hersberg, supported by Councilwoman Rakowsky. Is there any discussion from the maker?
Thank you. Congratulations, Emily, you're going to do a good job. I just wanted to bring a point. I had a discussion a couple of years ago, I believe it was Garden City, or it was Canton, they actually put about $10,000 in their city budget for these bus passes for that, and what they do with that is they don't give them away for free, but they sell them at their city hall or rec centers at a discounted rate, so, if you want to bring that up at one of those meetings, and just ahead of time before we get into our budget, I'd like to see us do a similar thing where we can maybe sell those tickets for half price if possible, so, just an idea for you. Thank you.
Any discussion from the supporter? Okay. Is there any additional discussion from the council? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Now officially, congratulations, Councilwoman Bowman. Okay. We will now move on to public comment. Everyone speaking before the council should do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive and profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the orderly conduct of the business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, other speakers or members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker and will not stop while the speaker is recognized from the floor. The speaker can ask questions at this time, and the person questioned may respond during the speaker's allotted amount of time. However, the clock will not be stopped once it is started. The clock will continue to run until the three minutes is up or the speaker is done speaking, whichever comes first. I was going to ask if there's anyone on my left or right, but we have someone who's up here. Yes, sir, clock.
There's copies of the Act of the Cemetery in there, too?
I'm sorry, I-
There's another stack of papers in there. If you can pass them out, please. Thank you.
Council President?
Yes, sir.
Speaker might want to know this time is the last thing, so it's in the best interest if you want to overget it, yes?
Good afternoon. This is a gentle topic. Somebody sits there and tells me, "My clock is ticking, you guys, nobody told me," you know? The subject's got to do with my son, and it's got to do with people buried at the cemetery that have been neglected for years. For years, we've been talking to the Islamic Memorial Gardens in Westland. They have neglected us for years, they haven't done nothing. There's floods over there, there's no bathrooms, it's not compliant with the ADA, it's not compliant with any ordinance, and there's no, now, there's no ordinance, so now, it falls under the state level, so, I'm asking the city to do something about it. To inspector to go in there, to see what the flood problem is, to adjust the situation. Mothers are over here, they're sitting in the back. They don't know what to do. They came up to me and say, "What can we do?" I said, "We can go to City Council." I sent a demand letter to these people. 14 days, it's been five years. Right here, if you open this right here, 2018, I mean, 2018, October 2nd, I took a video, look, it's horrific. Who wants to bury their loved one around water? And bunt? No bathrooms, no nothing. This is terrible. Nobody's doing nothing about it, and we need help, so the only people that can help us is the city, and I'm asking for automatic action immediately for these people to resolve the situation. Drainage, there's no drainage. It gets flooded. Who wants to walk? There's people that can't even go see their loved ones, or the water's all over the grave, it doesn't make sense. So, I don't understand, how can somebody help us?
Sure, if you want to stay afterwards to talk to the administration, we can talk to you about that, to see, you know, what, if anything, we can do as an administration on this issue to help you guys and-
But the thing, people have to understand that this has, here's the problem, there's no contract, they just tell us to pay, you pay cash, we pay, they give us receipt paid. There's no contract that says a breach of contract, so basically, we don't even own the plot. There's nothing there that shows it's ours. It's really bothering me. Like, I go ask for a contract, five years I've been asking for it, it's dead on arrival. How is that?
Sir, we understand, and that's why we'd like you to stay after, so we can get some more specifics on this and have some more time to talk about what's in here. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Council, Mayor. My name is Hassan Saab, I'm up here also talking about the same issue with the cemetery. I have loved ones buried there. Last week, I went there, there's holes in the graves sinking, I mean, there's some graves that you can't find, and, you know, the city should hold the cemetery, just like we hold any other business, to code ordinance and compliance, to be, like the young gentleman was up here saying, ADA laws, no bathrooms, no streets, no walkways, nothing. It's actually a pretty disturbing sight if you actually go there. There's holes as deep as three, four feet in the corners of graves that are just sinking, they're trip hazards, everything, and the owners of the property absolutely have nothing to say, they just, you know, they're out there slandering everybody, you know, it doesn't matter what religion you are or anything there, it's just the whole entire cemetery is in very distressed condition, and like I said, I personally went there last week to visit loved ones we have buried there, you can't find the graves, that's how bad the water is. Appreciate if the administration or the mayor's office would actually set up a meeting and talk about it, because they should be held to a higher standard, just like any other cemetery in the city, like the one we have here on Ford Road, how nice it is, and it's well taken care of, the one on Arbor Trail is just in miserable shape, and like I said, they take people's money and do absolutely nothing, so I appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Is there anyone on my right? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Councilmember, thank you for your time. My name is Danielle Nasri, and I am also a member of this community. My son is actually buried there. We've been asking the cemetery to fix this cemetery, and they never listen to us. This is our only comfort place that we go to pay our respect and pray for our kids, and some of the graves, you can't even find them. They are literally floating in water. I've been there since 2021, and every spring, they tell us, "We're going to fix it, we're going to get it done." Every spring, we are flooded, every fall, we are flooded. If anybody could go out there and see it, it is horrible, it is unbelievable, like, literally, the stones are covered in water and mud, it's so nasty. I walked in the other day, and I literally, I'm wearing a winter boot that is supposed to be waterproof, I walked in there and my whole foot down into the water, I literally have to pull myself, I fell to the back, and my boots were stuck in the mud, I have to go down, take them off, pull them back out to put them on. We have been asking these people for years to fix this issue, and no one is listening to us. They're always in excuse, "Michigan is a rainy state, there's nothing we can do." The last thing they said, "Complain to God to stop the rain," and we came to you guys to help us with this situation. It's just completely disrespectful for our loved one to be in that situation. Thank you for listening to us.
Ma'am, we're so very sorry, if you can stay afterwards, too, we'd like to get your information and be able to talk to you about that. Thank you.
Mike Hashem, I'm here today to talk about the cemetery. I just buried my uncle two weeks ago at that cemetery. My two cousins are buried there, one's 24-years-old, I just buried him two months ago. Honestly, if we've, if we have another option, we wouldn't bury at that cemetery. There's no options for us other than that cemetery, and there's another one all the way in Plymouth, but many of us live right down the road, we want to be close to our loved ones, we want to feel, you know, when we're down, we want to go visit them. Over the years, we've tried to come to an agreement with the cemetery, to at least to talk to a person who he calls himself Ron. They'll either answer the phone, or they'll just hang up in your face. That's not the Islamic way of treating another person. They claim they're people of God, but in my opinion, they're people of the devil. At the end of the day, we need answers. You know, my mom has a pacemaker, it takes her a little time to get to the graves, but the problem is, you know, it's just terrible over there. You know, you could literally, I know for a fact, some of the graves have shifted, and that place really either needs state involvement or city involvement. You guys could try to contact whoever's involved, which is, I guess they're called commissioners for the graveyard, but I'm pretty sure legal action has to be taken. We can't afford legal action. These guys upcharge us on the graves, you know, they're basically, it's a money mill, you know, because they know we have no options, and that's the only option we have nearby. Thank you.
Is there anyone on my left for public comment? Anyone on my left? Anyone on my right? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Zara Alweli, and I'm here today on behalf of myself and a list of families. The Alweli family, the Al Nasri family, the Al Neem family, the Fayha family, the Ayub family, the Soror family, and the Awada family. I can continue with many others if you'd like, but I'd like to get to the point of what brought us here today. These families all have two things in common, the first being that they're grieving families who trusted their loved ones to be at the Islamic Memorial Gardens on Ann Arbor Trail in Westland, and that we all have been negatively affected by the mismanagement of our loved ones' final resting place. At 13-years-old, I lost my 23-year-old brother, and on September 1st of 2011, he was buried at that cemetery, and I have not been able to get ahold of a single person since then. Unless I catch them on the grounds, and when I do, I'm giving sure answers in the runaround, and treated as if my grieving I are an inconvenience to them. In August of 2021, I lost my nephew at the age of 21. He was put to rest at the cemetery, but in an area that I like to call "The Pond of the Cemetery." After any rain, big or small, the area is submerged, along with any gravesets that are in that area. It's not for hours, it's not for days, it's for a couple of weeks at a time, that we're prevented from going to see our loved ones. Danielle, my sister-in-law, she goes there every single day, whether it's snowing, whether it's freezing cold, whether it's 90 degrees, she's there every day. So why does she have to go and walk through mud and rain, and like you heard, submerged into rain, to visit her 21-year-old son that was taken too soon? How is that fair? How is that okay? I don't know if any of you guys are mothers, or any of you guys are fathers, but I have a four-year-old who's autistic. Imagine trying to take him through that to visit his godfather or his uncle. How is that okay? There is nothing there to accommodate us. There is a family that reached out to me. When their loved one passed away, they ordered a stone, they paid for it in full. They told them it would be there the next spring, it took two years for them to get their stone, and when they got it, there was no picture that was supposed to be on there. And then, they told them, "Well, we paid in full." They said, "No, you did not, you need to pay more if you want the picture." They showed the proof, and till this day, it's been almost four years, and that picture has not been put there. How is that okay? As Mr. Hashem said, this is a money mill, and it's not okay. We want to bring revenue into the city of Westland, but we need the city of Westland to look out for us, for the safety of us, for the safety of our loved ones, to be able to visit who we need to visit at any time. Instead of them just taking donations for tax purposes, to be exempt from taxes, they need to do something with those donations. This is not okay whatsoever, and I thank you for your time.
Is there anyone on my left for public comment? Anyone on my right?
Hey, good evening, my name is Ali, and I've spoke to some people, actually. It's kind of off-topic, there was a contract drafted between the city and Midwest Recycling regarding clothing recycling program. It was effective January 1st and set to expire on 2017 of January 1st, and both parties agreed that there would be a five-year term for the contract to expire, so, the five-year term is over. After we asked multiple people trying to see how the bid works, I was shut down, and nobody kind of wanted to give me any answers, so assuming they pay six cents per pound, and assuming they collect 7,000 pounds per week to generate the city the revenue, what if other people want to pay more, assuming that we want to pay 12 cents per pound, that's the double, so, 7,000 pound times six cents is almost 21,000 pounds, versus if I'm trying to pay 12 or 15, that's 41 or 48,000 dollars per year. Every time that I did speak to someone, we never really got nowhere, and it's competition, it's healthy, that's what makes the economy grow. If we're not allowed to do that, I was also shut down from pretty much having approval from owners of different properties, I was also not allowed to do that. Just want to understand why, how it works, and we just want to kind of hope, that's all we're asking. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on my left? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, everyone, and first of all, my heart goes out to all the families, so sorry. And another thing, my longtime close- And another thing, my longtime close friend that I sat on, planning commission for years, Mr. Ken Sharp. Thank you. I just want to talk briefly about Relay for Life 2024. We are having our first lap this Saturday at the Central City Park Farmers Market, and we are welcoming everybody to come out and join us to take that first lap. It's January 6, 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at the Tanton Park in Westland. We will have hot cocoa, some snacks. If you want to know more about Relay, we are there to help you, but if you'd like to take your first lap, we would love to have you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone on my right for public comment? Yes, Ray.
You know, I always like to save the best for the last. I wanted to say good luck, Melissa, and good luck, Mike. For, I want to say good luck to you. And anyway, listening to these people in here, that's so sad. I wouldn't want to go to the cemetery like that, no way. It's terrible. I wouldn't want my loved ones, and I feel sorry for these people like that. That's heartbreaking, and hopefully you guys could help in, you know, because there's sometimes, too, there's always media, Channel 7, I've seen that stuff on news before, different things. Well, anyway, let's talk about some good stuff. Happy New Year, everyone. The police department, I drove up there, gave them Christmas cards for their hard dignity and their hard work and diversity out there, working real hard out there. And so is the fire department, they're doing a great job out there, too. Because they need to be recognized, and I think that's important, that we all help in on that, whoever can. Anyway, that is my passion, and I am planning on doing a training with them this year. That's one of my goals. And this here, I'm going to talk about this for a second. Grandma Whitner, one day I am going to meet her. I'm going to send her a nice letter. Because what it is, it is the Disability Council, okay? All the hard achievements, all the hard work I've done, I did an application up there, someone wanted me to join the board, and I'm with the voice now, bringing people with abilities, and that's what's important, that everybody should be heard, and it's important that, you know, we need a voice, and I think it's important. So what I hear from Westland, I'm going to bring it back up there, and I'm going to advocate, and that's what the change is start. I don't like the word disabled, because disabled means like you're disabled, you're not. No, people with abilities. Now, I can understand people with disabilities is a different, with the doctors and how we use things, but our goal is, and what I'm going to go and keep driving this, is people are people, people with abilities, people with special needs. There's better ways of using words, because I'm trying to get rid of stigma. Stigma is not, a reason why I'm so passionate about it, because years ago, that was like that. We're trying to break it. We need to keep breaking it, and I keep telling people, let's put the labels on the cans, but not on the people. So, anyway, I really enjoyed, tonight, too, at 6 o'clock, I go to the cinema morning, it was really great, too. I really enjoyed it. I want to wish everyone on the council who are running again, good luck, and cover, and you, too, as a mayor, good luck to you, too. And I'm still wanting to meet with you, so I called your office, anyway, hopefully I can meet with you in January. But I got good things are coming up with the disability acquis. It took me years to get this where I am here today, 18 years on that board, and I'm going to continue.
Thank you, Ray.
I love it.
Your time's up. Thank you, Ray. We appreciate you as always. All right, public comment. Anyone on my left? Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Sorry, I'm a little nervous.
That's okay.
Good evening. My name is Suru Alabasi, and on behalf of my friend and the Al-Brahimi family, you really need to address the cemetery situation. This is a family safe place, and my friend and her family have the right to visit their father's grave every single day. As a city council, you're responsible for this, not to mention, they are putting hay to cover up the mud. Don't let these conversations stop here. Those in charge are choosing to put the graves where there is, at the spots where it's mostly flooded. Please address this. Thank you.
Ms. Wilson.
You guys did a pretty good job tonight, Mike. Thank you for helping him out. He needed a little assistance there, just a tad bit. Put that foot behind you and push hard. Get it done.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Is there anyone else on my right? Public comment, anyone else on my right? Anyone else on my left? Mr. Sharp.
Yes, one last comment after the mayor gave me the opportunity to speak. One of the most important things I forgot, it's been a privilege to work with Mr. Ayub and learn from him and his knowledge. I just wanted to say thank you to him. That's it.
All right, anyone else on my right? Anyone else on my left? Anyone else in the audience for public comment? Seeing none, we will close public comment and move on to comments from the administration. Mayor?
Thank you, Council President. And good evening, everybody. Happy New Year. I hope this year brings many blessings to all of us. And hopefully you had a great time during the holidays, got some rest, and got to spend some time with your families. First of all, I would like to thank everyone that participated in the inaugural ceremony earlier today. Our council members were inaugurated before the meeting. Councilwoman Baumann, Council President Protem Sampi, Councilwoman Radkowski, and Council President Mike McDermott. Congratulations to you guys, and I look forward to working with all of you. And then, of course, congratulations to our city clerk, Richard LeBlanc. We really appreciate your service to the community and all your hard work. Next, I would like to thank the council for the approval of the appointments that we made tonight. City Attorney Jim Fason, Parks and Recreation Director Kyle Mulligan, Planning Director Mohammed Ayub. These guys are all professionals, they're hard workers, I trust them. Some of them are, well, actually, they're all familiar faces by now. Coming in as a new mayor and having a new way of doing things, they've been very accommodating to me, and I really appreciated your help so far and your service to the community, so I look forward to continuing to work with you. Next, I would like to thank and congratulate the members of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Council who were reappointed. There were a whole long list, so I wanted to wait to the end. I appreciated all the tees up, but I wanted to wait and just thank Chris Galatus, LaShawn Hart, Julie Slaybaugh, Jessica West, Derek Davis, and Amber Gilbert. Definitely appreciate all your work, looking forward to being a partner with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Council. Parks and Recreation is something that has been a priority for me from day one, looking forward to partnering with Kyle, the council, the city council, and working together, and I'm excited to do some great stuff together. So thank you for serving on the board. Curbside Christmas tree pickup is still going on. It's begun, and it'll run through January 12th. You can place your undecorated tree at the curb on your garbage day for removal. You may also take your undecorated tree to the recycle center at the DPS Yard, which is on Marquette between Wayne Road and Newburgh, and you can take it there Monday through Saturday from 9:00 to 5:00 p.m. I'd like to invite everyone to our annual Dr. Martin Luther King Ceremony, which will take place on Monday, January 15th. It's something that I look forward to every year, and being able to take part as mayor is something very special to me. We do have a remembrance walk at 9:00 a.m., as long as the weather is not too bad. And then the ceremony will start at 10:00 a.m. in the Grand Ballroom here at Westland City Hall. City Hall is closed for business on MLK Day in observance of the federal holiday, but will be open during that time for the ceremony. And I just want to invite everybody from the community to please attend. It's a very special event, a very meaningful event, and we're going to have some very interesting content and some great speakers this year, so I'm looking forward to it. We worked closely with Kyle and Pascal, putting together an agenda. There's still some changes to be made, working on getting some exciting speakers to come and talk with us. And then, I would just like to say to the members of our community who came out tonight speaking about Islamic Memorial Gardens, this is a tragic situation. I became aware of it this afternoon for the first time. I want to thank you for coming out and advocating. My condolences to you on the loss of your family members. As bearer, I will do anything possible to assist with this situation. I was speaking with the city attorney before the meeting and during the meeting about what we can do. My understanding is that the memorial gardens and cemeteries are under state jurisdiction, but I want you to know that I will assist and do anything I can to communicate with, the State Department's called LARA, Licensing and Regulatory Affairs. Have you spoken to them already? We're happy to try to follow up. I'll have the city attorney address that momentarily. My understanding is that it's regulated by the state under a public act, but we'll do our due diligence and we'll figure out what we can do. Like I said, I give you my word, we'll do anything possible to assist. There's no way, there's no reason you should be treated this way. It's very unfair, so I'm sorry to hear that this is going on. And then, you know, other ideas that I have is just to look, talk to Wayne County and see if there's any kind of maintenance they can do with the stormwater to maybe reduce flooding. I don't know if that's possible based on what water mains or lines are over there, but I'll definitely follow up with them and see if we can speak to them about it. It's unfortunate that the person that built this property did it in a floodplain. I don't know if they were aware of it at the time or not, or if, when it was approved, if there was that awareness or not, but obviously, it hasn't gone properly. So I'm just sorry to hear that the situation's occurring, and like I said, I'll do anything I can to assist. You're going to have to give me some time to look into it further and make some calls. I will have our city attorney speak, just to what, I want him to share with you what we discussed earlier, just based on the jurisdiction and kind of maybe what some of your options might be. But that, before he speaks, I just want you to know, I'm happy to assist, and I'll look forward to talking with you more about it, okay? Okay. Okay, and that's going to be, oh, and then to the gentleman about the recycling, clothing recycling. I was forwarded an email from December. I saw it for the first time today, coming back from the holidays. So it wasn't one of, it wasn't an emergency email, it came to me today. So after the new year, and then I'll, we'll take a look at that and see what we can do. That's going to be it for me this evening. Thank you, city council.
Thank you, ma'am. Any comments from the city attorney's office this evening?
Yes, through the chair, just to follow up on the mayor's comment regarding the Islamic Memorial Gardens. That did just come to the city attorney's attention today. It is my understanding, though, that that is governed by state law. If somebody at LARA is telling you that it's a local jurisdiction issue, that would go to a Westland ordinance, and you could, if the, there's no ordinance on the book right now that we would be able to enforce.
City attorney, speak. Thank you.
So the authority for the city of Westland comes from its charter and the ordinance that it has passed. That's certainly something that can be looked into, but LARA actually has online where you can file a complaint specific to cemeteries. So that, to me, tells you and me that that's who regulates cemeteries. Now, the statute that you passed out, sir, addresses an issue where there are some cities, townships that own cemeteries. And those cemeteries, there is a responsibility to maintain the property, to have funding for perpetual care that has to be taken care of. But this, my understanding, and again, it came to my attention today, is that this is privately owned on private property, and that's where we, as a city, would have a difficult time with jurisdiction. But I know Mayor Coleman has said he's willing to look into the issue, and we are here to support Mayor Coleman, as well as you, with those issues. So, again, I'm sure there'll be additional communication from the mayor's office on this issue. Just shifting gears, I'd like to congratulate Mo and Kyle on their reappointments. Would like to thank the mayor for the appointment of Mr. Fason as the city attorney. He's my partner, he's been the city attorney for over a decade. Also, thank city council for the confirmation, can't do it without their confirmation. Mr. Fason has been the city attorney, like I say, for over a decade. The resources of our office, we've served four different administrations. The other attorneys and our support staff, there's over 50 years of combined experience dealing with the city of Westland. I myself have been an assistant city attorney for over 20 years, representing the city of Westland, and we look forward to the opportunity to continue serving both the council, the mayor, and the citizens, so thank you.
Thank you. We have a comment from the city clerk's office.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to speak for a moment regarding the February 27 presidential primary election. For the folks in our community that plan to vote either by absentee ballot or in-person involving the February 27 election, I'd like to remind you that there is a legal requirement that you select a ballot style to vote in that election. This is not a city rule, this is beyond the city. We are legally required to have you identify privately whether you wish to receive a Democrat ballot or a Republican ballot in order to vote during the February 27 election. If you should choose to not do that, you will not be issued a ballot. Again, that's a law that emanates from elsewhere, it is not a local rule. But the reason I asked for a moment to speak about it now is that our office delivered, I'm going to say about 20,000 or so reminders to people that include the option to checkmark Republican or Democrat, flip it over, seal it, and mail it back to us so that we can record your choice. Nobody will know it except for you, but I noticed today, after removing 800 of those applications from our city mailboxes, that a number of them do not have a selection indicated. And what that means for our office is that we are required, one time, to provide an additional notification to that voter or voters that in order to receive a ballot, they do need to select Republican or Democrat regarding this upcoming election. This happens every four years, it's not new, it's happened for longer than I've been alive, and that's been a long time. And, yeah, I know. And I did talk to a person, I was in city hall every day after Christmas through yesterday, and I did talk to a couple of people in the parking lot, and one of them said, I've never had to do that before. And I said, I know you. Yes, you have. Every four years, this happens, and every four years, the clerk's office receives literally thousands of people who comment, I never had to do this before. I ask that you please consider, this is nothing new, please do it, we would like to get you your absentee ballot the day after we expect to receive them, because we're planning ahead, and we're planning a very large mail. If you have any questions regarding this process, I ask that you contact our office in one of two ways. You can email the clerk office at clerk@cityofwestland.com, or you can call us via telephone, One of our staff members would be happy to speak with you regarding that. And thank you again, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, and bless you. Okay, we will now move on to comments from the council members. We will start with council comments tonight with Councilwoman Emily Baumann.
Thank you. Is it on? Am I on?
You should be on. You should be on. You are on.
Okay, thank you. Hope I'm not always first, hope that gets changed up a little bit, being alphabetical. I'm like, oh, my office is first. First, I want to say Happy New Year. I'm excited for 2024. 2023 was a good year, I'm here, so it's actually been a really good year, so I'm really excited for 2024 as well. I do want to actually add a couple of comments from the inauguration. I neglected to say thank you to my husband, Bill, and my children, Augustus, Carrick, and Blaine, who have, did support me, actually, now for several years running for office, and I did neglect to thank them when I was up on the stage, and I was like, oh, that's so terrible. And I also wanted to thank the Honorable Donald Knapp, because he swore me in, so I did forget my thank yous. So, anyway, you're always welcome to remind me to say thank you to people, please, because I do tend to forget that. So I also want to say thank, congratulations to Ken Sharp, and thank you for your service, as well as, I was excited to hear how many years you've been married, that's a testimony to some just wonderful loyalty you guys have towards each other and love, so thank you. It's nice to see that. I would like to, there are a lot of people at Parks and Rec, Parks and Recreational Advisory Council, I think it, just seeing all the people being appointed and reappointed, I'm actually really excited for what's gonna happen. I think it's gonna be an amazing results from that, so I think there's so many wonderful changes in our Parks and Recreation Department and the council, so I'm looking forward to working with them on what they're gonna be looking to do. I do want to thank the support of my council members and everything for the appointment to the Nankin Transit. I did talk with Councilwoman Rakowski and said I probably have some big shoes to fill, so I definitely really appreciate that recognition, being able to serve in that way as well. I will just add that I did hear about the Islamic Memorial Gardens late last week, and I did drive through. There was a funeral going on, so I didn't stay that long, but I did get to see some of the areas that were underwater, and I have a friend that actually lives in the neighborhood that I reached out to, who did tell me that that is, you know, she was like, it really is, it's really bad. And so I do appreciate the mayor offering to step in and help with that, because I did do some of the research and looked at the statute and things like that from the state, so I'm, you know, it is very sad, and I just, I'm hoping we can come to a, we can help you and help come to something that will work. So, beyond that, and I think that might be all that I have tonight. So, thank you very much, and I look forward to the rest of this year. Please.
Thank you. We'll now have council comments from Councilman Godbout.
I'd like to, first, to the residents that came out from, and spoke about the Islamic Memorial Gardens, my heart goes out to you. And it's difficult enough to go to a cemetery, to visit a loved one, and to have to put up with those conditions is not acceptable. So I'm sure that all of my colleagues feel that same way, and, you know, we'll work with the mayor to see what, if anything, the city can do to try and improve the situation over there. It's just not acceptable. I'd like to congratulate our, the council members and the clerk that were sworn in this evening. Were sworn in, not sworn at, so that's always a good thing. And I'd like to congratulate our new council president, McDermott, and pro tem, Sampe, on their selection as president and pro tem. Councilwoman Baumann, congratulations on Nankin Transit. Having served that, on that commission in the past, it's a great body that does a lot of great work in the community. So I'm sure you will enjoy it and learn quite a bit about the transportation needs within multiple communities. I'd like to congratulate Faison, Jim Faison, and the Faison Grisco Law Firm on their reappointment as our city attorney. Plant Moran as our auditors. Mo and Kyle, congratulations on your reappointments. It's much appreciated, you do a great job for us. And to the six residents, and I know only Derek and Amber are here this evening, but thank you for serving on our Parks and Rec Advisory Council. As we saw at the last meeting, we've already expanded our Parks and Rec department, doubled the size. So I'm sure there's gonna be lots to do, and it's nice to have some new faces along with some people that have been on there for a while, to step forward and work on that. We'll keep, I'm sure that Kyle will keep you busy, so. I'd like to congratulate and thank Ken Sharp for his over 50 years of dedicated service to the city. It's much, much appreciated, Ken. And then, finally, it's been my honor to serve the residents of the city on the Westland City Council for the past 23 years. Tomorrow, I will resign from the city council to become part of Mayor Coleman's administrative team as deputy mayor. I look forward to the, to working with the mayor and all of the talented directors to provide quality services to all the residents and businesses in the city. I'd like to thank my wife and the residents who have supported me over the years, and I look forward to your continued support in my new role.
Thank you, Councilman. We will now hear from Councilman Hart.
Well, how do I follow that? I'm not ready to resign this year. Sorry, we'll get back to, first, Ken, I can't even begin to copy what Councilman Godbout said, but ditto seems a little short. I, as long as I've been involved in the city, you've always been around in every facet, and I got here in the city well after you'd retired, but to say that you're a fixture of the city would be a gross understatement, and all I can do is thank you. But I can also thank you for continuing to demonstrate to everybody else what a life of service continues to look like. You know, after I was in the military, I had to find a way to serve. The J.C.'s was my outlet. After the J.C.'s, I'm here. And, you know, and life is always about service and finding a way to do it, and Ken, you've shown me that there's always a way to serve, and I thank you twice for the service you've given and for the example you've given me as well. So thank you, Ken, I appreciate you. I'd like to congratulate our newest council leadership, Council President Michael McDermott and Council President Pro Tem Melissa Sampe. So what's important now for the council to realize is these are the longest-winded people on council. So it is our job to take all the wind out of their sails, because now they get to speak last every time. All right, so that way, it's one way we can control how much talking they can do. I don't know how successful we'll be, but we could at least try. But no, congratulations. Secondly, congratulations to all the, everybody who was sworn in today, running for public office isn't easy, you really put yourself out there. And what you don't realize until kind of you're halfway through and you do it, you put your family out there, too. Your family's there with you. I'll tell you, after I got elected the first time, and I'm walking through the grocery store, and I'm dressed like this with my kids, and I'm getting a lot of looks, and the kids are like, "Dad, why are they looking at you?" Because I don't know. Then I figured it out. So now I'm in there with a ball cap, a hoodie, and shorts, and scrumpy shoes, because you do thrust your family out there, so I know what it takes to do it, and thank you for your service. You'll find out, and the rest of you know, but congratulations on your elections, and thank you for your service to the community as well. With regards to the cemetery, again, brand new, very disheartening. I know that my family members were in a cemetery with similar issues, and I don't think we ever found a resolve. I hope that, you know, the mayor's got some ideas of what he can do to put pressure on the state. You do run into problems with jurisdictions, we deal with it all the time. I mean, there's only so much we can do, but I think this is where politics will suit itself well, Mr. Mayor, and your ability to apply pressure along with the city attorney as well as city council. So it'd be very disheartening, I know what you're going through. To be honest, not to that extent, but I have seen it, and it has affected my ancestors, so I know how you feel. Beyond that, I won't take up too much time, other than, go blue, go blue, go blue, go And they're gonna go again. It's all yours, Council President.
All right, thank you, Councilman. We will now hear from Councilman Hersberg.
Thank you, Council President. I want to start by congratulating Councilman Godbout on his approaching appointment as deputy mayor. Councilman Godbout's been here for over 20 years. I was just talking to him before the meeting, he said 23 years, we have 24 meetings a year, so plus or minus, he's attended and participated in more than 500 in 52 council meetings. So he comes with a lot of institutional knowledge, he's worked with several mayors, he's worked with a number of different council members, boards and commissions. He's gonna be a true asset to Coleman's administration and help the city move forward and make sure everything's being done right. So congratulations, Councilman Godbout, that's well deserved. Regarding the cemetery issue, I wish, I wish we knew about this sooner. I think it was mentioned that they've been having issues since 2018, and I'm hearing from the attorney's office that it's regulated by LARA, but my opinion, LARA regulates the business side of things, they regulate the hospitals, that we control the site plans. So we need to look over what original site plan was approved for that property, what walkways they proposed, if they built them or not. I believe that's definitely under the city's jurisdiction to handle. We should send ordinance out there, but first, we need to see if we can find that original site plan. I'm gonna head over there myself and take a look at it. I hope, I hope it gets cleared out fast, because it's already been several years. Thank you, Mr. Cash, for letting them know that they can come to council, come to the city, and let them know. Whenever there's problems in your neighborhood, you can always come, come to the city, so. Other than that, I want to congratulate Councilwoman Sampe on your appointment to pro tem. Congratulations to Councilman McDermott. I've spoken with you a lot about your plans and what you're gonna do. Councilman McDermott is very, very organized. He has pages and pages of plans and ideas and things that we want to get done in the city. Yeah, I'm sure a lot of people know that, so, good luck.
Spreadsheets.
Yep, the spreadsheets. I also want to congratulate Mr. Ken Sharp on receiving your recognition, that's well deserved. I know that you and your wife both do a lot of service in the community that you don't ask for credit for, that wasn't even mentioned here tonight. So you guys, that was a, congratulations. I'll leave it at that. I want to thank State Rep Wogala for being here. He represents only a small part of Westland, but with the vacancy in the majority of Westland state rep seat, he had offered, if there were people having issues with their unemployment or different things, to call his office. So I just want to thank Dylan Wogala for coming out to our meeting and offering that up. Lastly, I'll congratulate Derek and Amber on your appointments to the Parks and Rec council. I've seen Derek, he attends almost all the meetings we have, he's very engaged in the community and many other things, I think he's gonna do a great job. And then, yeah. I just, I just want to bring up to the mayor that we did have a board and commissioners' fair where we were asking people from the community if they wanted to join boards and commissions. That was done with the last administration. I know you were left with pretty much no information when you started, the office was empty. So I just hope you can find that information. If anybody applied or wanted to join a board or commission, maybe it would be wise to send an email to a council member or the mayor's office. I'd like to see, we have a lot of openings on these boards and commissions, we need to have them filled. They, they're the, I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Move on here from Council President Pro Tem.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can I have a look?
Hi, Paula.
Hi, Paula.
That's okay, you'll get it. It's an adjustment. Thank you, I appreciate it. Well, good evening, everyone. Like my colleagues, I want to offer my condolences and concern to you and your families. You know, I would have to agree with Peter, with the LARA being the business angle, you know, I think there's multiple entities at play here, so I think we're gonna have to contact a number of different offices. I'm thinking, like, Eagle must be a part of this. There's other parts on Ann Arbor Trail that were contaminated, so I'm wondering with, you know, if there is drainage issues from some of that, or what the stormwater issues are. But regardless, if we don't have an ordinance, then we create an ordinance. Okay? So let's just, we'll, we'll work together, we'll work with the administration, we'll work with our city attorneys, and make sure that every final resting place in our city has to confer, you know, conform to a certain standard. Okay? I mean, that, it's just reprehensible. I haven't had to walk in those shoes. Where my family's buried is in a different place, it's in good repair, right? God be praised. But we, all that's all we want to do, is to be able to spend time and reflect, and we should be unencumbered in doing that. So, you know, council president, if you can add that to our list of, you know, priorities, I would appreciate it.
Hundred percent.
You don't have to thank me, that's our job. Okay. I would like to congratulate Council President McDermott and Council President Pro Tem Sampe. I think they're both going to do outstanding in these roles. The training wheels take a little bit, they'll fall off naturally, but you, you know, gotta start somewhere, right? Only up from here. Councilwoman Baumann, I think you're gonna do a fantastic job on the Nankin Transit. It is a well-oiled machine. All of the commissioners, you know, it's just such a, it's a unique entity to be serving on, to be able to branch out from just local government and serve, you know, a larger portion of our region. And transportation is so key, and there's so many new things coming that are really just gonna enhance what Nankin offers their ridership, I think you're gonna love it. It's gonna be really easy for people to ride, because they're gonna have a digital component. It's gonna be top-notch, looking forward to that. Mr. Sharp, you know, when I first got on council, and I had a lot of questions, Jim Hart told me, you know who would know? Ken Sharp. And I, it was like, I would just look at him anytime I had a question, and I already knew the answer would be, you know who would know? It's Ken Sharp. So if it wasn't Jim Godbout, it was Ken Sharp. And Mrs. Sharp, your commitment to this community stands right beside your husband's. I know we've talked at length about some future endeavors, and I think you would be remiss to find a couple in this community that give of themselves so selflessly. They're just incredible people. Thank you, Mayor, for recognizing their commitment to service above self. There's a long list of people that are, that have been appointed and reappointed. We have, we've enjoyed the services of Faison and now Grisco for many, many years. Thank you for your continued protection of our city. Director Ayub and Director Mulligan, you're both top-notch, you really, you're a credit to your professions. And I think it's, you know, we have such good favor of having you two as part of the administration, and really looking forward to what we're going to do with the Parks and Rec, especially with the new park equipment that's gonna be coming, and our new ordinance book for planning that's gonna be rolled out. It's really an exciting time. Plant Moran always knocks it out of the park, they're the most respected auditors around, they've never steered us wrong, they've always, you know, gave it to us straight, you know, "This isn't gonna work, that's not gonna work, you're gonna be in trouble." And, you know, we have had really good leadership and stewardship of our budget from them. So it's a no-brainer to continue to support them. Thank you to Chris Galatas, LaShawn Hart, Julie Slavod, Jessica West, for your reappointments to the Parks and Rec. Congratulations to Derek Davis and Amber Gilbert, two people that I have the pleasure of knowing personally, one from a past life, and one from the present. Very excited to have you joining Parks and Rec. For those of you that don't know, Amber is part of the Dance Academy, the owner, if you will, of the Dance Academy, and it's a fantastic addition to some of the offerings in our community. And Derek is always active at study sessions, he's, when we went, were talking about expanding, doubling, as Mr. Godbout said, our Parks and Rec department, he was there. He was there, and he had a lot of very thoughtful commentary to add, and they were all very important additions about the parks. So I think you've got a top-notch candidate there as well. I'd also like to recognize Michael Harris for his continued service on Ninkin Transit. He's a fantastic gentleman. He's, and a scholar, and he's just a wonderful part of that board. And lastly, to Councilman Godbout, you know, we're gonna miss you. We're gonna miss the institutional knowledge on the council.
Not going far.
But yeah.
He's gonna be down there.
But now, well, but we're gonna miss you as our colleague. But I think we're all going to enjoy what you can contribute to the administration, your institutional knowledge for sure, your 500 and some odd, 552 council meetings, you know, since you were on council before I was born in Long John Silver's, right? So (LAUGHING). It's an inside joke. He understands. Don't worry, I'm not picking on him. No, but we're gonna miss you up here as a colleague, but we look forward to what you'll be contributing to the administration for sure. So best of luck to you.
Thanks.
And thank you for your service as a council member.
Thanks.
And with that, I'm sorry, I was long-winded because I'm trying to suck up all the air from the president. I bid you a good evening, and we'll see you in a couple weeks. Go blue.
Thank you, and apologies again, Councilwoman. We will now move on to Council President Pro Tem Sampe.
I like the tactic of trying to suck up our air. I think that's gonna be interesting. I wanted to start before I get into the comments about the Islamic Memorial Gardens. This is the first time I'm hearing about it. I was elected in 2021, and I haven't heard anything about it since, so thank you for bringing it to our attention. Lot of times, we don't hear about it until it's either brought here or sent in an email form, so thank you for that. I'm gonna work with the mayor's office and maybe our new deputy mayor or chief of staff, I don't know which one it's called, to possibly get a visit out there. So what you don't know is what you need to see, and from there, we can bring it back to the council, or we could take a field trip out there, get some pictures, and I agree with my colleague, perhaps there needs to be an ordinance. So I'm gonna just set, just FYI, I'll set an email with Council President on as well as possibly going out there and seeing what we have to do. It's unacceptable. I mean, if there's a business in Westland that has ordinance issues and, you know, we tackle blight in the city, I mean, why do we allow that to be an operating business in our city? So I'm so sorry you have to deal with that. I can't imagine the heartbreak that you feel every time you walk in there. So you have my word, and I'll stay after, I always do, that I'll be your contact or any one of us will be your contact. So just please, if you wouldn't mind, stay after. I would love to, you know, get your background and phone numbers as well, too. I wanted to thank the city clerk's office. We had a beautiful inauguration ceremony before the meeting. Richard LeBlanc, Deputy Clerk Shannon Inman, and the rest of the administration that made it possible. It was a beautiful ceremony. A lot of times, we don't get a chance. It was brought up about recognizing our family, and it was an opportunity for us to kind of thank the people that stand beside us or behind us or whatever you want to say. So I had an opportunity to thank my family, which was added bonus. So I started my four-year term yesterday. I'm just as grateful yesterday as I was when I was first elected. I wanted to thank the colleagues that supported me in this new role. Me and my colleague are gonna go through this together. Probably would be a learning for both of us, but we have a lot of ideas and we talk a lot, so I think there's gonna be a lot of business that gets done. You'll see probably more meetings and more opportunities to do a lot of great things. So congratulations, Council President. Congratulations to my colleagues, too, that were appointed, or not appointed, I'm sorry, inaugurated tonight as well. And just kind of going through a few quick congratulations, I know it's been said, but our planner, Mo and Kyle, you guys have been top-notch. I also agree. Fason and Grisco, Plant Moran, to everyone on the Parks and Rec board, Chris, LaShawn, Julie, Jessica, and then the new appointments, Derek and Amber. We do find, new blood is always welcome. So thank you, Amber, for reaching out to me. We've talked through Messenger, and Derek, obviously, you know where to find me. We talk all the time, so thank you, both of you, for stepping up into that new role. And Parks and Rec is like my baby.[935.23][935.23](LAUGHING). So I love it, love it, love it. I eat it up, so you might see me at some meetings. The Ninkin Transit appointments, so Michael Harris, thank you so much for your commitment. Appreciate it. Councilwoman Baumann, for stepping into that role, I do think you're gonna do a great job. I think it's, you're right, hard shoes to fill with Councilwoman Rakowski, but I think you'll do great. Mr. Sharp, thank you again for, and I think it was well, I don't want to say well overdue, but it was a well-deserved award and recognition, so thank you. I hope you're gonna do something fun and just relax because...
I'm not going to.
Okay.[979.13][979.13](LAUGHING). He's here. He's staying. Well, hopefully, you get to enjoy your downtime, but we appreciate you, and I know that you know this is always home. Councilman Godbout, congratulations again, too. It looks like we're gonna be working really closely with leadership with you and mayor, so I think it's gonna be exciting. And I'm really excited to dive into 2024. Like I said, I know we have an aggressive study session schedule. I reached out to Director Garza and Director Mulligan to set up like early morning meetings or, you know, just getting something on the books, so I'm really looking forward to that. I wanted to also mention, too, so on December 26, Mr. Anton Williams, he's a 48-year-old, bless you, who sneezes, 48-year-old small business owner. He was shot in the face by trying to help a car crash. He is expected to make a full recovery. I've reached out to him a few times. His family set up a GoFundMe page, and I've shared it a few times and just kind of reached out to keep in touch with him. But he has a business in Livonia that I'll share on my page as well, but I just want to send him well wishes, and he really is a hero. He stopped from a further tragedy from happening, so he interceded in a very scary situation. So I just wanted to thank him for that. He is a Westland resident. And I wanted to also thank just a few businesses. I'm almost done, I swear. I did something in December. It was called Pay It Forward Friday. A lot of families came up to me and just said that they had a lot personally that they were dealing with. So what I ended up doing is I worked with Visi's Pizza, Mr. Mike's Coney Island, and 888 Sushi and Asian Grill. And my family and I just purchased gift cards at our expense, just a way to show kindness and support in the community. So a lot of people have asked me, like, how can I help? Like, I want to spread kindness, too. I'm gonna post well in advance some restaurants, again, supporting local in Westland, that if people wanted to prepay a meal, what they could do is just put their credit card, you know, tell them how much you want to charge, and then from there, we just, you know, we kind of share it out. We'll share it out in the community. So we helped a lot of people in December. I hope to continue it in 2024 because there's a lot of bad that happens in this world. So if we can create a little bit of kindness and just help people out, you know, that's what I'm all about. So I wanted to let you know that that's gonna continue in 2024. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, January 16 at 7:00. If you need to reach me before, personal Facebook page is Councilwoman Melissa Sampe. My cell phone is 734-637-2078. Until then, be safe and kind with each other, and we'll see you soon.[1156.76][1156.76](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Councilwoman. I'd like to, first off, thank Councilwoman Baumann for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you for that. And also, congratulations on your appointment to the Ninkin Transit authority. I know that you are a big question-asker and a big note-taker from your time here on council and also when you've been visiting us quite frequently as a resident in the community. So I know that you will ask a lot of questions and really excel in that job. You will do, I think, a tremendous job representing the council, so congratulations on an appointment and well-deserved. And I also want to congratulate Mr. Harris on his reappointment. Mike Harris has served us for a long time, and I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge that he is the brother of the late, a friend of mine and a friend of many in this audience, the late Patricia Harris, who served this community in many different ways as well. Before I get to the rest of my congratulations and thank yous here, I did want to address this. First off, thank you for bringing this to all of our attention. This is disgraceful, and the people who own Islamic Memorial Gardens should be ashamed of themselves and how they can go to bed at night knowing that these are the conditions that they leave people's loved ones in and that people cannot go to a cemetery to visit those that they cared about the most, those that they have buried. And to see these photos, but more importantly than the photos in here, to hear the stories personally from people about how long this has been going on and how this has affected you and touched you, this is shameful. This is disgraceful, and I agree with what every one of my colleagues up here said. Looking into having an ordinance, what the mayor said, you know, turning over every stone to see if we can work with the state, the county, any agencies to get this done, what each of my colleagues said, we are all disgusted, we are all disturbed, and I am with them. No one should have to go with this. You are there to honor your loved ones. You are there to grieve, and the fact that you can't even get out to find their gravesite and you're there in these conditions is really disgusting and disgraceful. So thank you for bringing this to our attention. Thank you for having the courage to come up here and share what I'm sure is a very hard, very personal story as well. I can not imagine something like that, and I know from, you know, visiting my grandparents' grave sites, I would be equally disgusted, disturbed, and upset if their cemeteries were left in this condition. So I think you have the commitment of all of us that we are going to, you know, do everything we can in our power to get a resolution for this because shame on, shame on the owners of Islamic Memorial Gardens.[1304.46][1304.46](APPLAUSE). I want to congratulate Councilman Godbout on his 23 years of service on the council. You know, he has seen just about everything there is to see and experienced just about everything there is to experience here on the city council and here in the city of Westland. I've had many times off council where I've had the chance to sit down with Councilman Godbout and get a lot of sage advice and a lot of wisdom imparted on me. Sometimes I don't always follow that, and sometimes there is an "I told you so" afterwards, and he's absolutely right about that. But this community is better off for his 23 years of service. We are better off as a council for all the institutional knowledge that he has brought to the table, and the administration as deputy mayor, looking forward to, you know, working with him, working with Mayor Coleman. We have a lot to get done here this year for you, the people and the residents of the city of Westland, and we're gonna have a busy and robust agenda, as Council President Pro Tem Sampe alluded to. I think lots of study sessions and lots to discuss in the near future, and certainly, we want to hear from you, and we will have the mayor and Councilman Godbout helping us and spearheading that, so we're gonna be fortunate to have them there. So thank you for your 23 years of service, and we look forward to continuing to work with you here. We know you're not gone yet. You're just sliding over down to the end of the dais. So thank you, Councilman Godbout, and look forward to working with you. I want to congratulate my colleagues who supported me here tonight in this role as council president. Little bumpy start here. I promise you, we'll do better next time, and as Councilwoman Rakowski said, nowhere to go but up, but thank you for believing in me. Thank you for your support. It truly humbles me and honors me. And, you know, I want to congratulate my colleague as well, Council President Pro Tem Sampe. I very much look forward to working with her. We have a lot to get done, and I know that we're gonna be a great team and a really inclusive team to bring everybody, all seven members of the council and all of you in the community, in on this discussion. I know in the past, it feels like some people didn't feel like their voices were heard and that if you weren't on the right side of things, your ideas kind of got tamped down or shut out entirely, and that sometimes when residents would bring something up at the dais or they'd send us an email or give us a call, you felt that you weren't heard, and that shouldn't be the case. We work and we serve you. We work for you, and we should never forget that you can take us out of here at any time you want if we're not doing the job that you think that we can do. And so it is our job as council leadership, it is our job as a council to be as transparent and open with you as possible and to bring you all into the discussion, and as council leadership, we hope to bring each and every one of you, all seven members we serve with and the mayor, in on that discussion as well as we move forward with a busy 2024. So I won't go into everything we have on the agenda because that will be here all night, and I'm a long enough talker as it is.[1483.33][1483.33](LAUGHING). I want to thank Director Mulligan and Director Ayub and congratulate you guys on your reappointments. Both of you do fantastic work for the city. You know, we've got, part of that busy 2024 agenda includes a lot of work that we're gonna have to do with you, so I'm excited to partner up with both of you. Well-deserved reappointments. You guys do tremendous work, and I'm looking forward to continuing to work with each of you, so thank you. And apologies for not recognizing you earlier on the phone system when you had your hand raised, but we'll get that sorted out for next time, but thank you guys for your service. To each of our board and commission members, I want to congratulate you all on your reappointments. Chris Galatas, LaShawn Hart, Julie Slayball, Jessica West, and of course, Amber and Derek. You guys are gonna do a tremendous job on the Parks and Rec. Thank you, Mayor, for putting them up for reappointment. We've got a great team and a growing team on the Parks and Rec Advisory Commission, and, you know, looking forward to working with you and, you know, improving our Parks and Rec services and amenities, because I know that's gonna be a top priority for all of us here in 2024. And then I wanted to, who else do I have to thank? Wanted to thank the clerk's office, not only City Clerk LeBlanc, but Deputy Clerk Inman and the entire clerk staff, as well as all the directors and our DPS crew who helped to get the inauguration together today. It was, once again, if you had the chance, to attend a terrific ceremony, so thank you for all the hard work and pre-planning that goes into that. Very much appreciated and certainly pass along the thanks to...
Teamwork.
Your staff. It is. Teamwork makes the dream work, and without a great staff and our DPS crew, that would not be possible. I want to congratulate Mr. Everything, Ken Sharp. I think, other than mayor of Westland, he pretty much held every title. His many years of service in the fire department here in the city, his service on Planning Commission. I also want to thank Carol for lending him out to us for all those years. I know there were many nights where you didn't get to see him till midnight or later because...
It was by design.
Oh, okay. Get him on the, that may be true. That may be true. But Ken, for your many years of service, your institutional knowledge, everything you brought to the table from the fire department to the Planning Commission, this city is so much better off having you for over 50 years, and Carol, thank you for lending us out. Thank you, though, so much for your service. Just a couple of last things really quickly. I wanted to throw out a number, and this number is from 2023. The number is 16,443. That is how many runs your Westland Fire Department went on last year. That is all the EMS runs, calls for fire service, any call that they got. They had 16,443 runs, and that is a new all-time record for the fire department. And what we've seen over the last 20, 30 years is just about every single year, sans one. That number gets bigger and bigger and bigger. So you wonder why we sit up here and we talk about staffing the fire department is such a critical need, why we sit here, meeting after meeting sometimes, talking about staffing study sessions and needing to right-size our department and bring the guys that are on grant funding over to permanent funding. That 16,443, that amount of runs is why we need to do this and why public safety is, you know, top of mind and a top issue for all of us here on council, because ultimately, that more than anything impacts all of you. And when we have an adequately staffed department, that not only makes you safer, that makes all of our men and women in the department, all the union members of Westland Professional Firefighters Local 1279, it makes them safer as well. So it is my commitment, and I think the commitment of the council to you, that we are going to work on when we get that staffing study back from Manitoba, on developing a comprehensive plan, because 16,443 runs is a heck of a lot of runs, and we know if prior knowledge is any indicator, that number is going to get bigger next year as well. And then with that, if anybody needs anything from me, I am always available at 734-890-2146. Call or text. You can find me on my council page at Councilman Mike McDermott. And I wanted to close out with this and offer the final thank you to all the voters of Westland, each of you who participated in the last election. Many of you chose to vote for me. Some of you did not. Please know that even if you didn't vote for me, I am here to work just as hard for you and for every one of the 84,000 residents in this community. I want to thank you for coming out to vote. Those that supported me, thank you. Those on my council, those on our council that supported me, those elected officials in the community, thank you. And of course, to my mom and dad, who were both at the ceremony. I certainly couldn't do this without them. I thank them for their love and their support that they've shown me and their tutelage that they've given me.